Tuesday, May 7th at 7:00 PM. I was playing respects for a flag. We pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
CJ Gassdor?
Here.
Morgan Helma?
Yes.
John Knoll?
Here.
Leslie Pylak?
Here.
And Tom Schultz?
Here.
Anderson, our Justin Ballard and Scott Flynn tonight.
Did we hear from Scott today?
Yes, we did.
I'm making a motion to accuse Justin Ballard and Scott Flynn in the planning commission meeting on May 7th.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda for May 7th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for our May 7th, 2024 meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, passes. Approve the minutes for March 19th. Uh, excuse me, approve the minutes for March 19th, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for March 19th, 2024.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, numbers, item six, public hearing. What we'll do is we'll ask, extend to the public if they, uh, anybody like to stand up and talk in regards to 20 Church Street, uh, the window pursuant to the ordinance, section 4.1, point 1.3. I'll need a motion to, uh, to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Support. Of?
It's a roll call.
Roll call, thank you.
Pylak?
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Gassdor?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Okay, is there anybody from the public?
We're here. Would you like me to just stand or go to the podium? You're the applicant, you, you'll be editor, you'll, you can speak later when it comes to all.
This is mainly for the public to discuss things. Uh, if there's no member from the publics, then I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing on 7th floor.
Support.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's go down to, uh, call the public. Is there anybody in the public, do we have any public, uh?
Do you have any correspondence?
No correspondent, okay? So start our new business. PC 24 dash 05, sign permit applicant for 51 South Washington. Suite A, Oxford, Michigan. Partial ID number zero P O zero four two seven two zero two zero three five. Zoning C1 core, commercial district. Application, applicant is the Good Egg Breakfast Cafe. Owner, uh, Familia Properties LLC. Mark, uh... Mario, you want to lead off on this?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, good evening, everyone. Tonight we're here to consider the proposal of a, for one internally illuminated, uh, projecting wall sign at the location in current decided. Uh, so this proposed sign is a box sign. It's proposed to be 23 square feet in area. Uh, the zoning ordinance requires that projecting wall signs shall have a maximum surface display area of 16 square feet. So given this is 23, the proposed sign must be reduced in size to comply with our maximum sign area. Uh, they're here tonight because internally illuminated signs within the C1 core district does, do require, uh, internal review by the planning commission. Uh, and this sign is comprised of, based on the graphics provided, it would appear that the sign is being comprised of white or clear letters on a dark background field. So if this sign face or this background field is fully opaque, uh, such as an aluminum face with routed letters, uh, then that would allow for minimal transmission of any light. If for some reason the black, the black ground field is some type of acrylic or something that allows for light transmission, then there's potential for the entire sign area to be a, right, to provide light illumination and potential to cause glare and distraction to drivers. So we just asked that the applicant indicate the type of material used for the sign face, whether it's a fully opaque metal such as aluminum or whether it be a, something that's a little bit more, allows for more illumination. If it is, the, the metal, uh, option where only the text is, um, actually going to be lit, then we do feel that that, uh, style is in keeping what was recently approved in the village. Uh, it will have very minimal impact on passing drivers, uh, and their visibility. However, just to be on the safe side, we would ensure that, to ensure that that illumination is not excessive, uh, we recommend a dimmer be installed to control the sign's luminance level. So, uh, we recommend that the planning commission, if they find that it meets the standards that we've, uh, recently encountered, to allow for the sign, provided the black, uh, the background field be a opaque metal and provided that the application, uh, applicant installs a, uh, photometric sensor with an automatic dimmer control module that controls the light levels.
Is no one from the applicant?
Is anybody from that group?
No.
So, uh, were by planning commissioners, do you have any questions, lastly?
Uh, so let me make sure that I understand your conclusions about this application issue and standard. Um, in one situation, the, with regard to the actual size of the sign, it doesn't meet our current standards and should be reduced to, from a 23 square feet to 16 square feet. That's one thing you've mentioned.
Correct.
Another, uh, significant thing you are talking about is the opacity of the sign because that's going to have quite an impact on its visual appearance. So even if it was, uh, reduced in size, you feel like it's important for us to know what is the material because even if it meets the size, um, requirements, it may be too luminous or more luminous than, uh, is aesthetically preferable or than we would want to.
Yes, that's exactly correct. Because it's similar to the idea of if for some reason the, the back, background field was white and with dark letters, which we have seen in the past, we've asked them to invert that, that transit. And it's worked out, I think it's worked out very well. So then the only issue here would be just to have that information. Chances are it's metal, but just to be on the safe side would be best and to understand that that black field is in fact a, uh, completely opaque metal field. Oh, thanks. Um, Mario, the, uh, uh, the stores above, or the space above, I should say, um, who's the owner of that? Or maybe do you own it?
The owner of the property is owned by a management company. They own the whole building, all units.
Okay, so that lease sign that's there is for the upper?
Yeah, yeah, there's medical offices up there and things like that.
So, uh, so what's a tenant goes in there? Are they allowed to have?
At one time, there was a RE/MAX, uh, 2018 perhaps, a RE/MAX sign, office that was up there. There was granted permission, I think, to have an upper sign because we do allow for signings for upper, or signings for upper second floor businesses.
Can they, I mean, can they basically stack their sign, you know, right above the Good Egg?
They could possibly do that, or I think perhaps that was on, on this wall that's facing us, I think it was a RE/MAX sign was in 2018.
I think, I think it was. I'm just wondering if, if, if they have, if they're allowed to have a similar sign. I, I, where I'm going with that is, would that really prevent, you know, that new owner from having, I mean, we already have signs stacked on signs.
Yeah, and to end, part of your question and part of the thing describes it, those, the posts that are out there now was from the previous store or diner that was there. Um, but, but is there a potential for another, now that would be smaller than what they're now because that's 23 square, you'd go down 16 square feet, but still. Is there potential for another projecting sign to be above this? Max of both? They have to be, there's a minimum on the ground, it has to be up. I don't think we have a maximum height for it, that's not, Mario, speak to that.
Uh, well, we do have a minimum height in terms of allowing clearance for pedestrians under the, uh, sign of deep foot. However, when it does come to multi-tenant signs, uh, the ordinance does speak to it. It says, "In the case of multiple upper floors businesses sharing a single entryway, only one projecting sign may be permitted." However, the projecting sign may be designed in such a way as to give each business separate advertising space. So it, so what it, typically what happens in these situations is that the landlord's lease with the tenant, they can negotiate what, what kind of signs they can or can't have in terms of, and that's effective, that typically affects their lease rate. So it's a matter of whether the, um, how the landlord, how the property owner wishes to divvy up that sign allocation. If they want to come back and provide, and they get enough money from the upper floor tenants, say, that warrants doing a multi-tenant sign on that one blade, then they could, uh, then come back and do a different orientation. Chances are what it is, is he's, the, the property owner is giving it, giving that entire right to the ground floor tenant at the moment. And there'd be some other location, some other alternative for the upper floor tenants. Because typically, upper floor tenants actually don't get, you know, they don't get a sign above on the, on the top, above the second floor. They get, um, they only get signage in the, um, the door entry typically. You don't really give them any kind of additional sign. We do have one on, uh... Do we? On, yeah, on 24, there, I think it's a, uh, is it, isn't it Dr. or, uh?
The, the Kritinville deal?
No, 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 uh, so on the west side.
Oh, on the north side of Park there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's Beaumont upstairs?
Right.
Parks and Medical.
Parks and Medical.
Has a sign.
Are they shared on one? That can't be tall.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure.
But that's not an projecting sign either.
Correct, correct, yeah, correct.
We didn't, I think, too.
Yeah, yeah. And we do have our standards for, uh, special use approval for signs. So it could be they came in and approved for, acquired, uh, additional signage for that, that sign. But what I was referring to is what our, what our design standards are striving for, trying to be historic and traditional. Right. In that, uh, the upper tenants typically are, uh, either office or residential. Don't necessarily desire, you know, extensive amount of signage. But they do have a mechanism to get that additional signage if they, if they so choose. Okay, and, uh, just from a visual perspective, um, is that sign, the, the, the top part of the sign, is that? Is that where it should be? I mean, it looks, it looks pretty high because they, because they're going to the block, uh, to the window of the, of the seventh floor. So it is a little high, uh, as I mentioned, the minimum requirement between the grade and the bottom of the sign is supposed to be eight feet. Ordinance does suggest that, that the sign not project, uh, uh, from the second floor. Uh, so if, I, I thought the, if the ceilings in the, uh, and the ground floor tenants were, you know, standard ceilings are slightly higher, you know, the sign might be construed, I, I, when I looked at it, it felt like it was like a 60/40 between first floor and second floor. Right. Uh, so the ability, and, but I also looked at the previous sign, and the previous sign actually had a third arm that went above, and went, was that, went even higher. I'm, Joe, actually, if you turn on the TV, I may be able to, to get at that, uh, I, I, I was too slow. But, um, so, so it's a good, good, uh, uh, point done in terms of how does the sign relate to the downtown standards in the past and how would it relate in the future? That was a previous sign.
Oh, I see.
And it was a little bit higher and it had three arms, I'm just trying to back up.
They started over the, over the.
So if you go, if you go into the, like, the driveway a little bit to the right, you can, you want to.
There you go.
So that one's probably more closer to 16 foot, that'd be large.
And then...
Yeah, I see three arms, two, yeah.
That's two, so the bottom, the, this point right here is about this point of the window, whereas this top point right here is more like in the second sash.
So has the bottom arm been taken off?
I think the to, I think this, this, this top arm has been taken off. They're using the two existing.
Yeah.
Uh, can we go?
But I, I think it's kind of gets a little under.
Because you have one, one above the lintel right here and then one below it. And then this one, so you ones, it's kind of hard to tell. Oh, you're right.
Yeah, compared to the window.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yep, you have one above the window and yep.
But I think another issue is that the proposed sign is incompatible with the window design and the other rectangular signs. This sign, it is taller, that's true, but because it's vertical, it, it doesn't look incompatible. It looks kind of historic and a little bit more appropriate visually to me. But this sign just looks wrong. It just seems like it needs to either be lowered, you know, to be in line with the other first floor signs that run, you know, along the parking lot area. Because when you see the whole building, it looks awkward and it just catches my attention in, in a negative way.
Is there a requirement for how far off the building the sign can be?
Yes, five feet. It does comply with that standard. The, the maximum six inches is, uh, then...
Yeah, it's 15 inch wide sign.
Yeah, 16 square foot.
But by the time that would be.
They can't do more than five foot away from the, from the building.
One of the other criteria that are used when we've looked at signage in the villages, does it go along with the village atmosphere? Does this sign in the boards, it can go along with village atmosphere? Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. If I may, um, if it wasn't internally illuminated, it wouldn't be in front of you, that's right, Mario?
That's correct. Except for, well, because then he would just been, he would have been, excuse me, the applicant would have been made aware that they just have to reduce the size. And then if they reduce the size, then it would, then it would have been approved.
They could have put a 16 inch, or 16, uh...
16 square foot.
Purple sign up there, projecting sign and without any permit, well, with a permit, but no specialty use. It's in front of you.
A standard sign permit, no.
So it's not there for design purposes. Now, if you're trying to, you guys are waiting on a design, okay, it's not, jump, whatever, it's not.
Right. That's the thing, you know, I'm trying to recall other projecting signs we have, we don't have too many, right? I mean, I know this is...
Rush Kennet has a nice one.
That's true.
The new, it's not a surface group, you want to go?
It's not, it's illuminated though.
Is it, oh, no. It's not, it's not, right? We didn't go to specialty, we didn't go to specialty. Right, it's...
Oh, you and I, we're in a different district.
Yeah, sure, I'm in a different. They should, what would you guys think if they made the sign look like that? Part of that.
That's, I wish they were here. I think they could make this.
Could have been.
If they left the breakfast cafe words on, it just had the egg.
Yeah.
I think they'd be okay because it would cut the square footage down.
And that would look cool.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think, I, I want to make comments about appearance because I think this is an opportunity to say it, even if it isn't specifically part of our purview to talk about design, except we're, we're within the ordinance.
Well, I mean, the intent of the design review is for the internal illumination because typically internally illuminated signs, um, were not historic.
Yeah.
They were all externally illuminated. And that's, and that's why if the, the sign was externally illuminated, it would be permitted by right. Because we do have some other tenants that, that have gone to that point, down the street right over here on the other side, when we were looking at some of these other signs. These right here are externally illuminated wall signs. They're not projecting, but, you know, so those are more historic.
Sides give you the option, really have a cool sign.
Right, and, and once again, to be, in terms of the historic character, the style, you know, a lot of them are, like, the one I found out here is...
Doesn't Dr. Becker have one?
Yeah, Walton Becker right here.
Isn't that interesting?
It's projected, but not internally illuminated, please.
Like this is, you know, it's projecting, hanging, historic wall sign.
Well, you're right, probably.
Well, yeah. Don't get me wrong. So, and, you know, so to answer your question, I do believe you do have the purview as a planning, which you could, if, you turn, you, by being internally illuminated, it opens them up to the, uh, scrutiny for design.
Okay.
And the intent has always been to try and make sure that any of these signs, reasoning for that, to try and be compatible with the historic character. And so that's something that, you know, we kind of didn't necessarily address several years ago, but I have been trying to bring that up recently because the, because for, for that, if we are intending to make it historic, then it, that's what we should talk about. If not, then it should be permitted by right and they'd be allowed to do it anyway. You know, and then they, and, and if that's the way you'd like to see these happen, then, then they wouldn't have to be coming in front of you and they could be just approved.
Other than the size, though, right?
Other than the size, but, but that can be done administratively. There are many, many sign permits that come in that don't meet the size of their location and we review them administratively. They correct, the contractor corrects and then they get their permit.
Do we know if they already took that third post off the building?
I do believe so because in the application, it looks like it's missing, um...
I draw, I actually drew a post, too.
Yeah, so that's the picture.
Okay, there's just the...
So it's just the two.
And you can see where it is on the building, that's the top and the bottom of this.
I, I don't really have a problem with internally illuminated lights, like signs. I, I don't necessarily think that I have that big of a problem with the way that they're presenting it here. I don't think that it looks significantly different than a lot of the other signs that I've, we've gone through. The only difference is that it's sticking out. Um... I, I don't know, I, I just don't, like, I have to never split in hairs a little bit here, as far as the appearance goes.
I think we should all do the square footage, that's my opinion.
Well, that has to happen. There's not a dozen or very, it's, there's some poor sign and square footage. We can't screw it, propose a lot of square footage. Why should they ignore that or, and put it in that way?
Why can't we? I don't want to say you want to.
How would you approve a sign that violates the ordinance?
Doesn't it, by right, as being a special land use violate the ordinance?
No, special land use by, into illumination only.
Or a special land use by being too big? I don't know what the air quality would make that, right?
Okay, so technically, this isn't a special land use, uh, sign, because those are the ones that do request larger area, larger, different types of illumination. This is merely, merely sign design review because they have internally, internal illumination in the C1 core. So, it's just...
A special land use, right?
No, just as a sign design review. It's just a, it's just a certification permit. Because special land use can run to the land, you're in grants and rights and that sort of thing. This is just a design review of the style for, for applicability within the, in the C1 core district.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, back to Mario's point about the opacity, you know, but it's dark, so, and I know the, um, the old firm bureau or firm, that sign came from you and you guys asked it to be reversed and they were here and I said absolutely, they kind of liked that, they reversed it. I would assume that this is a one Lexan lease or plastic up there and that, that black is going to block most of the light, but it's probably going to still allow some. To have that be one, when you said about a metal, with only then the yellow or white being a different material that would allow light come through, I don't think is the case. It's probably one piece painted in that way.
You know.
Yeah, and I extended this engagement for 15 years and I don't see that happening. Two different metal pieces covered that, I don't see that happening. It's going to be one piece of Lexan. Because it's dark, it's going to block most of the light, like you guys said.
Right. Yeah. Well, and, and also our nor, our normal condition of having a photometric sensor on the dimmer could be effective. Has, has been found as an effective way. And, you know, um, so there's that as well. I just wasn't sure in terms of the sign itself, because we have like the, uh, the law sign at the corner. I thought his was metal and they did, they did a cut out, cut, but, but you're right, chances are something like this is more of a...
Yeah.
And it's still black, so it's still...
It does it to one.
It does it, but it's, you know, it's like a, probably 80% or 90% opacity versus 100% when it's metal.
The last, the last bit, I, did you read, um, Kelly's letter that it was like a special? She said that this was a special case, um...
I think that's way to a different, I don't know. Oh.
Sorry, that's 22 North Washington.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, um, Chair. One gentleman was here specifically to speak, public comment, we have public comment later too, right?
Yes.
Okay, you can do it then.
Do not?
No, 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 I, I was thinking that, that's what, he was here specifically for a public comment.
Well, planning commission, we have, we have a topic before us, we have a size issue, we have a material issue that has been called out, and we have the request that we usually put on our signs as a dimmer. How do you want to proceed?
I, I'd like to make a motion to deny the sign for the application for 51 South Washington because it doesn't meet our size requirements.
Would you go as far as to make a recommendation for design?
No. Let the applicant have their meeting and we can talk about it.
I'll second that. So we have motion on the floor to deny the sign. We have a second. Uh, do we need to take a roll call on this? Roll call, please.
Yes. Pylak?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Uh, yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Gassdor?
Yeah.
And Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll inform the applicant of the board's motion as well as some of the comments and requests and that they'll be best, the best interest of the law.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank you, thanks, Joe.
I do want to mention that the dimmer wasn't mentioned in the motion and I think that should also be addressed.
Well, their relation for denial is because it doesn't meet the ordinance, I think that's clear.
Yeah, that's...
So when they come back, we'll make sure that the dimmers, if Mario's been very kind to him, he's right.
Then, uh, I would, in, in that circumstance, I would vote yes. I don't know if you could make a change.
Done. It's done, it's done.
So my, so my fellow commissioners don't think I'm completely bonkers.
I thought you fell asleep.
Let's move on to new business, item B. PC 2406, special land use for a drive-through window, pre-ordered pickup for 20 Church Street, Oxford, Michigan. Partial ID P zero, zero four two two four five five F zero zero four. Zoning I1 industrial district.
Mr. Chair, the applicants are, and their business, uh, representatives are here, just...
Thank you very much. Uh, would we like to do Mario first or the applicants first?
Your choice.
Advocates?
Mario. Mario, just for, for the viewing public, I just summarize the fact that this application is for 20 Church Street, uh, which is located on the south side of Church Street, east of North Washington Street. Uh, the site itself is zone I1 industrial. And the site was recently approved by the planning commission and has been redeveloped for an adult use marijuana retailer. It's doing business as, uh, Rush Kennet. The applicant is proposing to establish a drive-through window on the south side of the building and, uh, within the I1 district, this does require special land use approval. For, uh, special land use, uh, we do require, one, looking at the general standards for special land use approval. We'll also be looking at the specific standards for a drive-through window and then any site plan issues. Generally speaking, the site itself, as I mentioned, is zoned I1, to the east and west it's zoned and used as I, commercial, on the west, on the east it's zoned and used as industrial, to the north it's zoned commercial, but it is the, uh, Oxford Fire Department, uh, station, fire station, excuse me. Um, and to the south, uh, while zone R3, that's on the opposite side, uh, property used for multifamilies on the opposite side of the Pollyann Trail Bridge. So generally speaking, the commercial nature of the other uses, the expansion of the commercial, and the expansion of the commercial activity on the site by, uh, by installation of the window, it would actually appear to be compatible with the adjacent uses when it is operating effi, efficiently. When you look, coming to the other standards, there's eight other criteria, you look at special land use, the application itself generally meets all those standards. However, I would point out in my review letter, paragraph five, where we discuss, "The proposed use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained uh, compatible with those surrounding land, land uses." Now, as proposed, the, the drive-through window, as I mentioned, will be on the south side of the building. Uh, vehicles would enter on the existing drive-through located on the west side of the property, drive southbound to the, uh, on the, on the west side of the building and then turn, uh, eastbound at the ba, at the very southwest... and then turn, uh, eastbound at the very southwest corner of the building to line up the driver's side entry with the, with the, uh, proposed window on that southeast corner of the building. So the configuration, uh, due to the narrow, uh, existing width of the drive-through access, excuse me, of the access drive on the west, uh, results in the exit drive, uh, not, it doesn't have a, uh, what's called a escape lane or vehicle, uh, turnout until the very end of the drive, uh, configuration. So as a result, um, after, uh, customers visiting the site, uh, if they are within that drive will have to wait their turn basically to, if they wanted to exit. That's one issue. Uh, the other issue is, uh, more, uh, more important when it comes to the operation, uh, its impact on the, the potential impact on the, on the use and the adjacent properties is the... The applicant is proposing that this will be, it will be order and pickup at the window, uh, location. There won't be a menu board where a customer would order ahead and then pick up their items. Uh, in the, in the lane, they would have interactions with the, uh, with a customer service representative in the window and then they would receive their product and then leave. So the issue with that is, you know, there's the potential for, uh, longer wait times for customers. You know, people have to make a decision on the products that are being chosen. They might, you know, not have the product they're looking for and then they have to make another decision. And that just adds to, uh, the, the timeframe in which a customer is be sitting at the window. Therefore, the timeframe gets cut down to the, to the customers waiting in line and then therefore you have increased stacking. Now, this configuration will allow ten vehicles apart to stack on the site. However, there is that potential that, uh, because these uses we found typically, uh, have their most busiest times on Fridays and Saturday nights. So there, it's not a, uh, product that's built, that's, that's purchased evenly throughout a, a seven-day week. It's, it's, it's loaded into a particular days of the week. So as a result, there's a potential for on those, those times, only those times, that it could be increased stacking. Basically, in the end, that increased stacking could potentially bleed off into the Church Street right away and could negatively impact adjacent property, including, uh, potentially the Oxford, uh, Fire Department. Another issue, just similar issue, but the, another standard of the special land use is, when you look at special land use, you are supposed to make sure that the special land use will, will not negatively impact and will actually minimize the impact of traffic generated under proposed use. Everything I've just described about the proposed configuration, how it's operated, if it operates that way, could negatively impact. For example, that, but one way it could be addressed is if the applicant indicated this was only going to be for pickups of call ahead or order online or through an app, whatever 21st century technology we have, the ability to, have, had a time where a customer could pick things up and exit the lane quickly. That would cut down on drive time, cut down on the potential for traffic. But in the end, we do believe that, um, it's important to consider the impact of the traffic impacts when you're looking at special land use. Looking at specific standards for drive-through, it's actually basically the same. Uh, specifically, the ordinance does ask that you, that the applicant either provide a bypass lane or, uh, the Planning Commission look at the proposed configuration and make the determination that what's proposed is appropriate. So as mentioned, the proposal is to have a bypass lane near the end. So you would have to make the determination that that, that configuration is appropriate. And as I mentioned, the, they're proposing right now there would be no menu boards. Uh, you just have to confirm with the applicant that that's the case. That's part of our specific required for driving. Then finally, looking at the site plan questions, it relates, um, it's once again, because it's, an existing site has been redeveloped. Uh, there's minimal changes to the site itself. The only thing would be, uh, the proposed changes, which is they are proposing a raised curb island at the south end of the property, near the window location, so that way they could define vehicles parking, excuse me, vehicles at the window being serviced and the potential for vehicles to bypass them. In theory, that does seem very appropriate. It's good for site circulation, it would be appropriate. However, I would note that, uh, we had recent communication with the village engineer. They were concerned that the traffic lane, uh, curvices and, and businesses, based on the, the diagram submitted, they weren't sure if these configurations were appropriate, uh, size and radii. So the engineer recommended that the applicant provide, uh, basically, uh, turning movement, turning movement diagrams with a current radii and a wheel paths that we've been receiving with normal site plans to ensure that these, uh, proposed configuration, a vehicle actually make these movements. Uh, that's something that's normal for a site. So in the end, um, if the Planning Commission does make the determination that this is a use meets our standards for special land use approval, we would recommend, uh, one, uh, that the applicant provide a detailed drive-through operation plan which attempts to minimize the customer wait time, uh, as much as feasible. And that may include, but it's not limited to, potentially changing the window to a pickup-only, a bell. Two, uh, we recommend that any approval that he will be granted, uh, would be conditioned on the applicant being required to suspend the use of the drive-through window and submit a revised site plan to address vehicle stacking if it's determined that the vehicle stacking becomes so egregious that it's negatively impacting the, uh, Church Street traffic. And we believe the only ones that would be effectively able to make that determination would be the Oxford Police Department. If they're constantly calling, coming out every Saturday and Friday and Saturday because there's vehicles stacked in Church Street, if the Oxford Department, Police Department feels that's necessary to be a different solution, then we feel the applicant's special use should be suspended so they can come up with a different alternative to address it. And then we would recommend any approval be contingent on the applicant addressing the requirements of the village engineer and the village fire department.
Do you have this plan available to go on the screen?
Yeah. I just, I wanted to see if you have my scribbled notes that I was reading from. So I will, uh...
Mr. Chair? Later, this afternoon, we received, I think Terry shared it with Mario in here as well. And I discussed those concerns with him and he tried to encompass that into his email if you like.
You go ahead, I was going to speak to him, go right ahead.
Okay. So again, initially he was concerned that they come around the building and the drive-through and turn left around the corner. The curb is bumped out there and he was concerned, couldn't someone come around that bump out and still make it back in along the building because of the, uh, the sharpness of that turn going around? He thought, why couldn't that curb come straight up and be more than ninety or rounded curve there? He wasn't sure why the bump out was there. That's currently configured that way in the lead though. So that was the, the one concern. The other one is, and you don't see it on this plan, but you see a little island, there's a delineating of the drive-through pickup area. Right there, that island, just left of that island, there is a drain structure. You see the top part of the island right there, right? That's, so just left of that top part of that island, adjacent to the left of it, there was the south, there was a drain structure. And he was concerned that perhaps, you know, the lid is fine, it's not a flexible lid. Underneath that lid, there's a four-foot wide drain structure typically. And he was concerned that that curvy, that north curb of the island maybe over top of the drain structure itself. It might, you know, suggest if that curb looked, uh, looked in, maybe they reduce or pull it back south a couple feet to make sure that it's not over top of the drain structure. I don't know if it was a minimum length of that drain or that curvy that was required and that it wasn't, or it was just drawn in that fashion. Uh, but those were his two concerns, is making that corner around and making sure that curb for that, uh, lane wasn't over top of the drain structure. It's not, he looked at the, the drain structure sheet, uh, soil, uh, drain sheet, it doesn't, it's not over the lid, of course. The lid, there's more than a lid.
So Joe, the, the, the turn, the vehicle make the turn with that little bottom, is that because of the, that narrow?
And again, and, and I apologize because we didn't send this to, to Paul. He didn't hear about this thing until today. Because initially, when I first saw this come through, I didn't really think it was anything about change to the drain and stuff like that. So when Mario noted it in his letter, I thought, oh, he gave old Paul from rural today. So he wasn't able to visit the site specifically and he sees the dotted lines, you come around there, like the delivery truck coming around to the, the, uh, staging area for deliveries. He said, that's obvious, okay, to make that corner. But he wasn't positive about seeing it or seeing those dotted lines and, uh, there. Did he positive that they come around there and make it into where that drive is? He's like, I can't say for sure it's something that they're drawing. And that was his only concern there. It may not be necessary, but that curb is already there, that bump out is already there, right?
Just to speak on that, just because we're on the property now and we're driving it.
Yeah.
Um, I actually think that that would work out a little bit better. I think it'd give the, the consumer driver just a little more leniency to actually have that, not having a tight turn right against the building. So it gives them like that little bump out, then it's come back in.
Right. His only concern was again, and, and that's because we, he didn't have time to visit the site, look at it. He said, I'm just sure, I don't know, he said, I don't know if you can come around that corner and come back into that. I looked at it, it seems reasonable to me that you could, but...
It's more than that space.
Isn't that where your garbage can is?
Yeah. Well, the garbage can's more tucked in the corner. It's tucked all the way in the corner.
All the way up to...
Yeah, all the way up.
Top lock?
Top lock.
Top lock.
I just can't read anything out of this plan. I have no idea where the drive-through window is.
I apologize, this plane currently is turned so north is to the, to the right, or to, to the right? So north is right.
Oh, I know where north is. Then I know where the drive-through is.
Would you show us where the south property line is?
Who's the south property?
Let me, let me turn it to the correct view. So north is now up right here, so the south property line is this, this line right here. Well, this is the property line.
Yeah, that's the Pollyanna truck.
Yeah, this, this, this line right here.
The thing is, the property line.
Yeah, this is the property line right here. So correct me if I'm wrong, there should be engineered standards in what the arc of that turn is around that building? And that's what we don't have, correct?
Yeah, and, and he just said, uh, you know, by moving, if they moved that, um, the curb that's there, that it's going to be installed to delineate the pickup area and that, he says they shorten that curb to A, get away from the drain structure, that will also help the opening of that, of that, it was comfortable.
Is that, is that an issue?
Because that's not in there, right?
It's not, that's not there, but...
Right.
Yeah, it's there.
Well, no, would that be an issue? No, not at all. This was provided by Zero Bub, Feldman, who's the existing engineer, um, that had planned out this, uh, drawing before we even, before Rush Campus acquired the drive-through. So he's the original engineer on this. He's worked closely with, uh, the village and I've worked with Joe and everyone here for years now. So, uh, I don't think that would be an issue. It's not something that's existing. Um, so shortening that little bump out. Like I said, me driving it, I kind of think that that would help a little bit, but either way.
What's the function of the island exactly?
To delineate the people coming into the pickup window or escaping?
Yeah, to ensure people understand there's two lanes there. One's for pickup and one's to go around.
Okay, so painted lines aren't adequate, that's why the curb is being proposed? The island, I mean?
We sure, we still will have probably painted lines, arrows, directional arrows. Um, right now that driveway is an exit, um, but this plan here will be an entrance. Um, so there will be new directional arrows to help consumers.
Especially if they've already been there before and don't realize the change.
Hang on, let's get back. Are you all set with, with your explanation or are you not done? We're getting way out. I'm, I'm also...
Yeah, when he's done that, why?
Would you folks come up and introduce yourself, tell us what you'd like to do? Thank you.
AP Council members, my name is Sean Mansour. I'm an attorney and am a present Rush Campus. And, uh, the purpose of this is to expand on something we already do for our customers, which is called curb-side pickup. So the general idea is someone places an online order on the website. We get a ticket, just like you would if you, if you order a pizza. We put the order together, we fulfill it, is what we call it. And then we have racks that we stick these orders on with names and they're, uh, then the people would essentially come to a parking spot where there'd be a curb-side sign. They'd call a number on that sign, they'd call inside the store, notify us that they're present. We would send a, uh, a salesperson out there to complete the whole transaction, to bring out the product, to take the money, to give the change, there is the process. They are followed by security. It's something we do in our other stores and it works out pretty well. Uh, we don't have a ton of volume with it. I mean, you might have coincidentally three or four people at once. That's the most we'll typically see, but usually it's just one or two people and it's, it's an in-and-out type of thing. The, the whole transaction takes about three to five minutes. What this does, it expands on that and it creates even more of a convenience for our customers and it also creates a safety precaution for our cashiers and our bartenders. Rather than them going out into the parking lot and being exposed to someone in their vehicle, if they come right out to the window at the drive-through. Uh, and again, to reiterate, it's not a order-drive-through. This is, you've already placed your order online, you don't want to come in the store for whatever reason, whether it's just to be more discreet, whether it's a handicap you have, you don't want to get out of the car. It truly is, uh, more of a convenience to the customer more than anything else. Uh, and it's exciting. This will be the first of its kind. I don't know of any other dispensary in Oakland County that does this. I think it's going to attract customers. Uh, it's not going to make us, you know, super busy overnight by any means, but it's just, it's an added benefit to our customers. Uh, and it's, it's a really cool thing to have at a dispensary.
Do you know if there's any way that when you fill your order, you could say, can you need to pick it up between nine and nine ten? And next one is to pick it up between nine ten and nine, just to keep down on the people who are stacking your lane?
Sure, I mean, we could create that concept. Typically, what we do is...
The system actually does automatically?
Yeah, we, it's possible. What we do now though, just so they understand, is if someone placed an order anytime during the day, they have until nine PM to pick it up. If they don't pick it up by nine PM, that order is put back on the shelf. You'd have to replace that order the following day. And again, we have a store in Hazel Park, Michigan that does about two to three times the volume that this store is doing and we haven't seen, like I said earlier, more than three coincidentally just appear at the same time and call the curb-side number and have, you know, the cashier come out. It just typically doesn't happen. It would be nice, you know, the traffic would be nice.
Would you, would you back up to that screen? And if there's four cars lined up there to come up to the window, could you just walk us through how that would work? Could you play that a little bit more, make it bigger?
No, sure. So my brother's here, his name is Anton. I want you to introduce you guys to him. He's the construction guy. He's the guy that's going to piece this thing together and talk to the engineer. So I'll let you speak on that, Anton.
I put some things together in my mind, but you describe it.
My name's Anton Langshaw, and I'm Anton Mansour. Uh, was the project manager on actually building out the whole project from the get-go. Uh, so any questions you do have, please, you know, state them and I'll do my best to answer them.
He asked you. I pointed out what the car stacking would be from the driver.
Pickup windows proposed, sorry.
Sorry, I'm just trying to do something here and give you a scale of a vehicle. I think.
Please, for your four minutes, I've got it.
I think it should be...
No, you just want to touch the screen.
That was back in high school.
No, this is, I have the wrong scale. Sorry. I was just trying to give you a graphic of what an ounce of car would look like. Because, but like on the, on the, uh, graphic, you see, it's hard to see, but this is about nineteen-inch feet right here. So a car length is about one length of that, uh, curb down.
Yep, so that's actually the proposed, uh, pickup window is right where this arrow is directing towards. Um, so that's where the first car stacking would begin. Um, after that, second one would be right behind it. I don't think we'd see a third one until, uh, we kind of turn that corner. So I think we're only going to be able to stack two cars before we turn that corner and then so on, we'll stack them there.
You didn't want to have people creep up?
Sure.
Like I say, it creeps us all the time. I was in St. Lawrence the other day.
Yeah, I'm saying, I don't think it'll like fully, you won't fully see three cars.
So in my simple mind, they're going to call ahead or contact you some way?
No. Oh, they place the order online first.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Orders are already placed.
Yeah.
They're there just to pick it up. Is the order paid for?
No, they paid for it then.
Okay, so in the queue or in that stacking, you're going to have a exchange of, uh, payment and a item they're buying?
That'll happen right at the pickup window. It'll be an easy transaction as consumer will provide their ID as they're checked in. There's an ID scanner right at that window. ID will be scanned. Once that ID is shown as valid, um, bartender will give them their total for their order. They will receive that money.
You, there, the chance of a person sitting in a car and saying, I want item B or C and...
Nope.
No, I want D, okay, we don't have that.
Nope.
So my question to Mario then is, is that the bypass lane, is that an ordinance?
The ordinance, uh, does require that, but it also states that the Planning Commission can approve any alternative. Uh, you know, in a best-case scenario, we would have a bypass lane across the entire length of an ordering lane. However, you know, with the, the size of lots we have in the village, that's just, you know, not really practical. And a lot, and not a lot of our drive-throughs have it.
Do we have a variance for that?
No, it wouldn't be a variance. It would just be if the Planning Commission feels as proposed, this configuration is appropriate or meets the factors and it works. Because in this case, there is eventually a, a bypass. And if they feel that they're, they're standing like three or four is be the max and the amount of time someone's waiting before they want to exit and say, I...
I don't see a bypass issue because of the way that you're conducting the business. The business is already... I don't see a bypass issue because of the way that you're conducting the business. The business is already done. They're just there to pay and pick up.
Quickly pick it up.
And, and knowing that information now, it's more, uh, you know, it's more, uh, indicating that this, the use will operate more efficiently and effectively. And not, and have less probability of having any kind of stacking.
What would prevent someone from getting in the lane thinking that they could pull up to the window and order? I mean, how would you?
How would we respond to the situation? Uh, to pull over into a parking spot, place your order quickly online, come right back in around the line.
Well, I'm, I'm saying there could be a, a person who gets in the car lane thinking that they should go all the way up to the window, but they haven't.
There could be, there could be.
Oh, that's gonna happen towards, oh, it's coming tomorrow. Marketing, uh, marketing, in-store knowledge. Uh, you know, we send daily updates to our customers via text.
I think signage is the, is the best way. You just have a signage that's called ahead.
More signage. Joe, I, I love it.
Driving, driving, drivings, signage is of a certain size that exempts the ordinance. You know, if you're less than four feet, you could add one at the front there that says, pre-order pickup only.
Sure.
That's kind of very good.
That's different than the signage we have in your buildings.
I know. Gosh, I was just teasing you.
Alright, that's a good question.
So yeah, like near the church street entrance, it could be, you know, public, you know, directional signage.
Yeah, pre-order pickup only or something.
And just, uh, for frame of reference, just also too, the distance from the, from the rear, from the southern edge to the, to the property line. Well, yeah, to the property line is a hundred and forty-five feet. Uh, within the ordinance, we do require twenty feet per stacking lane. So that's a minimum of seven cars stacked on the side of the building. And then it does make sense, the distance from this edge to the drive-through window, you could probably fit two or at least two, if not three. So that's why we come up with about ten, nine to ten vehicles on the private property. So.
I can't imagine more than three at a time, three or four.
Yeah, very question.
Uh, yeah, alright, so thank you. Uh, but there is a second one I have.
Of course.
Um, so, um, Mario, that, the bypass lane?
Mm-hmm.
Can you point it out to me?
Right here.
So I guess I don't understand the purpose of that, cause once you're in line, once you get up to that point, is there a reason to bypass?
Uh, the only, you know, it's, was one of those, uh, features that is typically done if, for some reason, there's just some type of emergency the person needs to get out of, or they've changed their mind, or. It's one of the, what's the?
Forgot your wallet.
Forgot your wallet, forgot your pre-order. It's, it's not, that's why it's, a variance is not required to change the configuration. Like I said, it's, it's more of a modern day convenience and also in this day and age, try and minimize any kind of contest between customers.
And, um, how big parking spaces are you losing?
Uh, only to lose this two up, uh, you pull up the screen.
So you're now losing the lawn at the.
Which I really didn't wanna lose them. I mean, we could use them still as employee parking, but right there, these two.
Do you still need the parking requirements by losing those two?
We sure do.
Oh, then, so these are, was removed? It seems like they could remain.
You gotta, could remain that, uh.
You can't get around back north to church street. You have to exit through the drive-through.
Right, but those could be employee parking.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yep.
Well, aren't you losing the two by, uh, don't you have two where the windows going in right now? Or no?
Uh, they're on the southern edge.
Right.
So you lose the two right, well, these, in theory, these two.
No, there is two, there's two, there's two right here.
Oh, okay.
Yep, these I believe are used as employee parking. And then there's a loading dock, which is.
Right here.
Right over there. Sorry.
So you're losing the top, the, the, the two where the windows.
Two where the windows, right against the building, which we still have now. Two, I believe twenty, now we'll have twenty-six with two handicaps.
That seems like an absurd amount of parking.
But it wasn't enough.
Wasn't enough. It's the standard for a handicap as well.
They used every one of those babies. And you couldn't get through that parking lot.
It's a good idea, it's a good idea.
With the drive-through even a little smoother.
No, and that big is going.
Yeah, four twenty is not a danger.
No.
We got, I didn't, in our other store, we had zero, we had zero pickups in our other store.
Yeah, it's kind of.
It's one of those days where everyone wants to be involved.
Yeah, it was a Saturday too, fall on a Saturday and it was, it was.
That's kind of how, uh, from a planning standpoint, that's how we used to do parking standards based on Christmas Eve. And that's why we had sea of asphalt parking in front of a lot of trucking stores. That's why the, those parking standards are no longer done. You don't pave an entire lot just for one day out of the year.
No, it is, uh, one last question. It's hard to see on, on, on this guy.
No additional lighting? No additional lighting at all. We have a light pole that's actually right over here.
Yeah.
On this side of the property.
And there's there one.
We also have.
Right here, is that?
That was never installed. No, it wasn't.
At the window, you can have a spotlight.
Um, still, that's gonna be part of the building drawings, architectural drawings that we'll have. Cause we're gonna need auditing too for, uh, you know, rain purposes, rain, slister.
We should only get a camera going straight.
Always be a camera. There's a camera on every square inch of the property. Um, but there is lighting on the backside of that property as well, wall mounts and, uh, light pole.
If you have a camera now, then you will have seen me drive through there about three times today, so. I'm not kidding.
Oh, you're taking it.
If you wanna play it hard.
Okay, I think that's all I have. A couple of housekeeping things I just wanted to bring up this good time. We do have a letter from the fire department. They had no issues. Uh, we do have a letter from the, uh, village, uh, police department and they did not have any issues. Uh, they already did talk with the, uh, advocate in regards.
I spoke with chief today.
Yes.
Uh, we had a great understanding on, uh, how we're gonna go about this. Um, told him, told him that we're looking to work with the city, um, have been since we got, you know, broke ground. Um, great job with Joe as well. The building department, everyone's been great with us. Uh, so we're looking to continue that relationship together. Um, but the chief and I have a great understanding on how this whole process is gonna work. And he actually, uh, and then the phone call said, I believe that this is a safer route than, uh, traditional curbside that we run in other businesses.
So I have a little concern about the late letter we got in from, uh, row engineering. They talked about curbing. Uh, they talked about stormwater management in that bottom corner. I know that's a very little corner on the east, uh, south side of the property. Uh, I know that's an issue. Uh, where do we go with this?
His, his concern was the, uh, drain structure right by that curb. And if, if they shorten that curb to where there's, and they can assure that it won't be over top of that drain structure, then he was fine with that.
If I could speak real quick on that, Joe, I also wouldn't mind. If you could speak with the engineer from row about it. We would not mind it, um, by actually eliminating that curb. Um, if that, we see that, that would be more feasible. Um, I don't know if you guys would rather have that for the differentiated between the pickup and the bypass, um, but we're open to all ideas when it comes to that.
I have to defer to my, I don't know if that curb is required or not. I, I don't.
Yeah, I don't either, cause this was provided by, you know, Daryl Bellman. So I don't know if the city engineer is requiring it or if he kinda believes that that's necessary.
It's not required, but just from my operational standpoint, I do think it'd be, uh, it helps to define and, and direct traffic. However, the size doesn't necessarily get that large. If, if we need to move it, Joe, if this is the correct.
Yep.
Is this the, the location?
If they shorten four feet or something.
Yeah, you're just shortening it, so.
I thought, I mean, maybe if we went as far as like, um, if you guys seen them at like Chick-fil-A's, you know, their drive-throughs are pretty crazy. Those plastic ballards that.
Are kinda like safety cones.
They're safety cones.
It makes it really hard for the guy plowing your lot too. Curbs aren't great either, but.
They're not. So I mean, but we're open to, you know, whatever ideas that.
I can only, I can only speak to his concerns that chairman has asked me to hear about that. And his, his question or his, his solution to that was if they're willing to shorten that curb, ensure that it's not over top of that drain structure, that eliminates that concern.
From a planning commission standpoint, can we, I mean, assume, set aside the engineering concerns, that, that the planning commission is fine with everything else. Can we, can we approve it? Contingent upon the engineer's approval and.
Yes.
Cause I, you know, they may, they may come up with something else, but.
Yes.
I mean, we're.
But I, I think the, the idea of a weighted safety cone that's a little like six foot high, that you can move at the end of the night.
Cause you're so good for Tom, you're right. I got it. Yes, sir.
Just to follow on, on Tom's point, yes. Paul had done a complete review of the site plan, of course, when it came to you last time. So he's familiar with the site, you know? Um, this was just a, a last edition for him.
Right, yeah. Understand, understand. Uh, a couple of things I wrote down, where there's gonna be no menu boards, there'll be.
No menu board, no speaker.
It'll be a, uh, will you have a slide open window?
It'll be an automatic sliding door based, you know, with sensors. Um, so car was to pull up and a bartender comes up to the window, the window will open, uh, with sensors. Um, there'll be no speaker phone. There'll be no lockbox or bulletproof glass. It can be very welcoming. Um, just as if they were doing a curbside order like Sean said, uh, outside in the vehicle.
Then, then I guess, uh, from my perspective on this is that if we meet all the requirements of our consultants and, uh, with the fire and the police, uh, I don't really have a problem with this.
Right, I, I was kinda running into the same, same thing that these guys seem kind of on it.
And if I can, just on that point, like we made a huge investment in this village. We find out we can be here for a very long time and be a good partner with the village. So, I mean, we want to make you guys happy and we're open to different ideas. Um, like we're kinda giving this out, we're very open to that. So whatever makes this community happy, we're open to be here for a while.
I, I think that, uh, if a motion were to be made, then we need to make sure that we adhere to the row as well as the McKinnler. Primarily in the row, there might be some changes to that. You're gonna have to work with row engineering in regards to the, um, if there's new information because they got this, such a work, work deal.
Okay, we're gonna have to make civil engineering and architectural adjustments. So we'll provide those to Joe at the building department.
So that takes care of the stormwater management, all of the things that we just.
All civil architectural plans will be provided to Joe and, uh, I believe that's all we'll leave, you know, plans left.
Quick question.
Go ahead, I mean. Mario, so, uh, so based on all this discussion, assuming, you know, this kid's kicked a row and they do their thing. Do you have any other, do you have any other issues?
Uh, actually the only issue that I might have, but not the two that I originally indicated, is they've addressed operation issues. And I believe based on those operation issues, they don't need any kind of contingent approval for the special land use. However, I would like to see, um, because the photometric plan that we looked at did have the, the light at the, uh, northwest corner of the site up here. So that could be installed. I think that'd be helpful because that will aid in customers seeing the signage that it is a pickup order only. So that, this side, this light here could be installed, I think that'd be.
Would we be okay with, uh,
Or some method.
Open to wall mounted lightage on that side of the building just due to the, the property already being completed, structural wise?
Yeah, so.
Trying to do underground electrical is gonna be a massive project.
True. So then just something, as long as it's fully shielded and directed downwards, it'll be a little, little something that'd be helpful.
Great.
And then it could be.
So that'd be the northwest corner of the building. Yep, which I believe there is already a wall patch installed there. Um, but I will double check on that and I'll work with engineering to make sure that there's enough.
Might just be about changing out the fixture because sometimes.
Sure.
Even though it's fully shielded, the, the fixtures can throw over like thirty-five feet.
Correct.
I think just changing out the fixture might be all it takes.
Easy post.
So, so to answer your question, uh, Mr. Schultz, would be, the only condition of approval I would suggest would be adjustment to the light levels to ensure, uh, visibility of signage and any conditions of the city engineer.
So light levels of signage, a, like, a sign that indicates that online orders only and row engineering.
Correct.
Alright. I would like to make a motion for approval of the project, contingent on a sign that indicates that, um, the drive-through is for online orders only, that there is lighting for said sign and contingent to the approval of row engineering.
Listen, McKenna is what?
And McKenna, and McKenna.
Any more, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did, did we get the, the, the light in the northwest?
Yeah, I hear that. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Thanks.
Can I suggest adding the following language, specifically that the engineers are satisfied with the late delineation curb at the drive-in window? Because if it can be short, it can be short if they want it long. I want it safe. I want it to not block that drain. I want it to do what it's supposed to do to keep people from running into each other, if you're okay with it.
Yeah, do I have to say it all over again?
No, you can say, I accept that now.
I accept. You're welcome.
Any other questions you guys have for me? Oh, appreciate you guys.
We have a motion.
Alright, support.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
So we have a motion on the floor. It's been supported. Uh, a row call vote, please.
Gastor?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Highlight?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
You guys are good.
Motion carried.
You can run on the parking lot now. Alright, well, we'll follow you and.
Oh, yeah.
Paul.
Thank you.
Probably on the.
Excuse us. Yeah, thank you guys. Appreciate it. Have a great night. Thank you.
Alright.
Number nine holds with us to review the landscaping ordinance draft amendment. Mario?
Uh, apologies. We were working with, uh, staff on another issue in regards to some other site revisions and didn't have enough to get to the landscape. So that will be at your next package.
I have no problem with laying that. Uh, public comment. Uh, Joe, where would you lay off it?
Yes, this gentleman was here to make a public comment and then it's, um, by version of a request you'd get or take into consideration for mental of the ordinance standards.
Keep the sign ordinance stuck going.
Uh, I did, but for, I'm not a pet, uh, packet for everybody, so.
These aren't off of me.
They're not off, you know, there's fifty-seven of them there, so. I'm Kyle Morsekey, owner of twenty-two North Washington and dealership event venue. So one of the things that I wanted to, um, come and have a conversation about would be the, the sign ordinance for, um, like a size of sign. Um, right now it states that you can, per one lineal foot, you get one square footage a time, up to thirty square feet. For me, I have roughly fifty-seven lineal feet of frontage on, uh, N twenty-four. Um, so, so for me, I, I would like to be, I guess, taking into consideration of maybe reviewing that ordinance to see if we can up it for maybe a case such as mine. Um, because I would be the only building in downtown Oxford that has that much square footage, um, I guess, right on that twenty-four, other than a corner, um, building. So, um, we would like to obviously have a, a bigger sign on the, on the building as I think it would be more proportional. Um, if you go to the one square footage or one lineal foot per square foot, um, I think that allows for people to have a, a good proportionate sign for their, uh, building. Where if I were to have to adhere to that, it would make kind of look like I'm putting a sticker on the, the front of my building where I think a, a bigger sign would definitely be more appealing. Uh, you can see that the, the font that we use is kind of a throwback to a nineteen fifteen font, um, from actually when it was a Packard dealership, um, or Ford dealership. So we're trying to keep that, uh, kinda historical aesthetic as well, so.
Can I, sorry, I'm his wife.
That's my wife.
Come up here. Hi, I'm Kate Morsekey. Um, I think also too, what my husband is also trying to communicate is we also are a, the only single owner, owner of a building as well too. So we have the largest storefront, um, but unlike the other storefronts on twenty-four, we are the only owners, whereas the other large storefronts have multiple corners, which means they would have multiple signs, kind of like the Ake diner. Um, so that is also why we are looking to increase the sign ordinance or we're asking to increase it. Um, and additionally too, what we have also discovered was although the Williams art glass is a massive sign right now, what we're looking to do is go back to kind of the original sign or semi-original from like the nineteen fifties. It's about the same length as that sign as well too. Um, so we're still kind of going with the trend of it being the historical aspect with the font of the nineteen fifties. I did some research on that to make sure we were including that because we want that vintage historical aspect to go along with the Packard dealership, um, as well as the length of the sign.
Mr. Chair? I will. May I please?
Sure.
Sir, um, I, I inform Kyle, I, that is why I'm Mr. Morsekey, when this came up about this, I said, that's the ordinance that is what it is. If, if you care to comment and, and to public comment, make a suggestion that they consider.
If you care to come and, and to public comment, make a suggestion that they consider amending ordinance, you can come do that, and you can provide some examples of why you feel that's in, in interest. But it's not on the agenda, I, I, and we're pulling, we don't expect feedback tonight.
Nope.
You can present your case, planning commission can take it in, and.
That's what's.
That's what I'm just clarifying, they're not here expecting something like that, I've made those expectations clear to them.
Yep.
You've come, make your case, and when somebody says to me, why is it thirty square foot? My answer is, I don't know, somebody chose that number, I, I don't know, Mo's been on planning mission for a long time, somehow along the course of time, they came up with that number.
My question was the directional point of order, this is information given to us, is it our body to make a decision whether we allow a larger sign, or is it?
It would be amended to zoning ordinance, if Mario, whether it's over the chair, so that, that's my question here.
It wouldn't be.
He's asking to consider re-changing, amending the ordinance, I guess.
Well, yeah, so, just to address the, the issue, the, the signage standards are intended to be about the size and scale of the building, however, we do have examples of buildings like this that could be larger. So, I would say the most, the preferred alternative would be for the applicant to apply for a special use sign. So, the special use sign standards allow for the applicant to admit something that doesn't comply with our standards, and they can, the planning commission can determine if the proposed signage is appropriate. The zoning ordinance has seven criteria to make sure that that sign is appropriate, from making sure it's safe, doesn't cause any distractions, and also is, it takes into account aesthetics and proportion of the building. Because they are correct, there are definitely some instances in which a certain signage just doesn't go fit with the actual scale and mass of the building. You know, in this particular case, the mass and scale of that particular wall is just very uniform, it's very long, and they are correct, from what I, off the top of my head, and not looking at the rest, it is one of the largest storefronts we have, but that's probably the, that's, I wasn't here when we did it, but I get the feeling that's the reason why thirty-five was chosen, because for the majority of our buildings, thirty-five works.
It's thirty.
But there are definitely some instances where.
Thirty.
Definitely some instances where it doesn't, I would say this is a case where it doesn't, and so if they applied for something, then they could.
He just gave examples of thirty, and I went fifty-seven over like.
Right, so, yeah, I definitely think it's something that, you know, could be considered as part of an application, because that's another case where, it's a mechanism where they can do it, and honestly, it's a better mechanism than a variance, because a variance has a very high bar, because a variance is about application to break the rules. If we change the ordinances, then it applies to everybody, we have to do this whole study about why it is.
So we have an avenue for them to approach us with a special.
Correct.
Special use.
And I do think it'd be appropriate, but that is correct, sir.
Sure, so that, that's why he's here tonight, because I, I felt the same way with Mario about variance, that, that you can't get a break just because you want to increase the difference.
So we'll send you that.
I didn't take account of the specialty of signing thing, so that's why.
Please, thank you for sharing with us.
No problem, at least you've got some reading material.
You've done your homework.
Yeah.
I appreciate that you took the time to come to us to tell us what you're thinking before you initiated your formal process, thank you.
And the example in there of our sign, that is what we're thinking of, what it would look like.
Yes, with the thirty square foot, well, it's actually, I think a twenty-eight, so twenty-seven square foot sign in there, or a fifty-seven square foot sign, so, yeah.
Thank you.
And maybe you missed the break, I don't know.
But then we know what to do, also, we want it lit up.
Well, the good thing is, you can do that all in one shot.
Yeah, exactly.
It will make comeback before, it's a little one-stop shop.
As you consider both the front of your building and the signage on the back of your building, to make it so old.
Yeah, do, do the back as well.
Oh, you need.
Yeah, for sure.
You're paying for the signs, we don't care.
Yeah.
Okay, any other public comment, I see none. Mario, consultants and administration reports, or comments, nothing else to discuss?
We have some comments that I want to share, Mario and I do, that, he doesn't have the problem, I do, and he knows I'm gonna share this with you. About a potential plan coming in front of you, having to do with the, our master plan, how we get labeled as South Washington Triangle. Yesterday, we got this information, applicants, if you're offered a South Washington Triangle, we hand a new car wash, three point seven by acres, or something like that. This is what the developer came to me yesterday, Mario and I, he's, he's seen it as well, we talked briefly. It's, it's as different than its zone four, it would be a special use request, or something along those lines we were talking about, not necessarily a P V, but more of a conditional zone possibly. It's being, would, would be proposed as owner occupied townhomes, and things like that. And like Mario and I are pretty familiar with this side, we've met with previous applicants. I think, Mario, were you here when the, when the RM zoning request came in, was that Chris Corey still? That was twenty-nine.
I was at least at one, I was with one of them, where they wanted to have like the fifty apartments in the building.
Yeah, yes, yeah, so, so that was a, a very zoning request, which got shut down, rightfully so, I believe, to our RM zoning. So, this is infancy, they came to us, they, they're looking at a tight timeline with the owner of a ninety-eight window, so they gotta get an idea update, do they have any traction to this type of thing or not? We aren't expecting any discussion or action tonight, we just want to let you know if this is coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Joe, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did you say how many units?
Those are eight, four unit, four individual townhomes, single family townhomes. Yes, they're single family, owner occupied townhomes.
Previously, people have been attempting to have fifty or plus apartments, or more, even more than that.
That's the last one I remember was real.
Yes, multi-story, three, four stories.
So, and if, and if you haven't seen, if you look at our master plan, that we have a near北side development plan, which is the Hampton Black property, which is recently sold, and we hope for people. And then there's a South Washington Triangle plan that's listed in there, and we have some overlays on those, which we have out to the public of what we are designing to see on those, so, that's what this kind of gets into.
Thank you. We have an Oxford Township Planning Commission, I'll speak to that for reports, we're working on our master plan, we're moving forward with that, we just approved what we call Telenor North, there's a hundred and sixty-one homes, I believe, on Oxford Lakes Road and Drainer Road. Anything from the Z B A?
Mr. Chair, could I speak to what you just mentioned?
Yes, sir.
And the developers came and talked to us about that, they wanted to know what, and if anything, do we need from the township, or from the village. Obviously, their, their, their main entrance would be off of Drainer Boulevard entrance, but they're also gonna be proposing, the entrance should tie into where the Ashley and Oxford Road meet, where there's a three-way stop sign now, would become a four-way stop sign. I shared the information and stuff with Mario, and just a right-of-way permit, that would be a single drive entrance, not a Boulevard entrance, and I asked him about the, I say a right-of-way permit, do you see anything else? And he agreed that, there wouldn't be anything coming to the planning commission for us, because it's not our property. I see, Mr. Chair, does it?
Have they resolved the issue of Oxford Lakes owning the East?
The spite strip, they call it, if you can say. Yes, I think they have, I think there is an opening at that.
There's a sixty-foot opening there?
Yes.
That's been, that's been taken care of.
Yep.
Uh, Z B A?
Nothing on our end, all is quiet.
D D A?
Um, D D A, Kelly's out of town, at a conference, they're playing along, I, I know there's a vacancy, they'll be up for a recommendation for a appointment at their company meeting next week.
Thank you. Commissioners' comments?
So, uh, something that I did recently is, is I, I've done an analysis on every single property in Oxford, and measured more or less whether we're losing money on that particular property, if we're making money or losing money. I was wondering if I could maybe go over it with Mario, and see if we can come up with some really, some interesting items to help build a healthier budget for Oxford.
Yes. How do you determine if a house is making revenue or not?
Yeah, so, basically, what I, what I did is I went to the, the, this Oakland County A, made every, like, information on every property, what their taxable value is, and their lot sizes are. And more or less, what I did was I, I took the tax, the taxable value, divided it by the lot that would go to the village, and then, and then I, I divided it by acre. So, what I can say is like, oh, we're getting this amount of revenue per acre. And then what I did is I took the total expenses that we had throughout the, the village of Oxford, and divided that per acre as well. And what we can do is we can come up with a, like, a pretty good estimation of, like, that, like, one acre of Oxford costs this much, and this property is bringing in this much revenue in, in compare, compared to each other. I, I sent, I sent in the paperwork to, to Main Street, South America, we got really positive feedback, I wrote a white paper from them, and I feel pretty confident that I'm at, my information is accurate, more or less.
So... A high density. Okay, explain that again.
Okay, so.
So my lot is seventy by one forty-five.
Okay.
What else do you need to know?
Okay, okay, so.
My assessment is, or my taxable or assessment?
Yeah, your, your taxable value, so.
My taxable, I believe, is sixty-nine.
Okay. So, what we can say is, your taxable value is sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand dollars, times, I think it was like, point, like, point oh one one five, or, or something, something like that. Sorry, I, I.
You don't have to, you have all the information.
Right, and then, and then what we can do is divide it by, so, so we know how much you're paying in tax, right? And then we can divide it by the acreage and say, you are paying some amount of dollars per acre. And we can use that, because, because Oxford has a finite amount of land, like, we want, like, that, that value per acre is really important, because if you have like a huge property and you're not like, and you're paying the same amount of taxes as your small property, we're much better off copying your small property and making like twenty of them than like the one, one giant, giant property.
So the neighborhood happens to have small homes?
Mm-hmm.
Because they're older properties, they haven't put out additions?
Mm-hmm.
But they're on larger lots?
Mm-hmm.
They're not as valuable as people with bigger homes, or possibly smaller lots?
Too, they don't bring in as much, as much revenue.
But I think one key to that will be, looking at the numbers to see, it's not actual individual unit, but possibly number of units. So, it doesn't have to be that a three thou, we're not trying to say, well, I mean, I don't know what the numbers are, I don't know what to be, but it's a conundrum that a lot of communities have, do you want a lot of three thousand, four thousand square foot homes, or do you get the same value from having eight hundred to, to twelve hundred square foot homes, more on the same lot, or in apartments? Such as, actually, and I think a key thing that'll be interesting will be what's proposed for the Triangle parcel, because those are single, presently, they'd be proposed for ownership of a townhouse style unit. So, we always want to look at making sure that the housing units on, within the village provide enough variety for our residents. But, but, but I, I, I hear what you're saying, well, we, we wanna tread lightly, because we don't want to necessarily infer one thing way or the other, that we're trying to say, mansions are better than.
People who can't afford big houses need a place to live, too.
Exactly.
One hundred percent, and us, like, and money isn't the only factor that's in here, but it, it does bother me that it's never considered, it's never even part of the, like, the conversation of like, hey, like, like, we're, like, we're, we're trying to bring in this, this, like, this property, like, well, let's, let's say that we're, we're someone trying to bring in a farm which doesn't bring, bring in much revenue, like, is it like, we're, we're making everyone else subsidize like a piece of land, actually, like.
I actually think we always talk about it when we have development, we haven't had any new subdivisions in the village in, what was the last one, twenty-five years? I've been like seven, or eight, or nine.
Scripter, scripter.
Oh, scripter, yeah.
Sixteen homes.
Yeah. And so it is discussed, you know, when, when they're talking about, when the developer comes, they're definitely talking about the old sizes of the lots, and the sizes of the home. They want to put as big a home on that property as they can put on that property, and we've got to pull them back. No, you, you've got to have green space, you've got to have trees, you've got to have front yards, and so it is discussed. But like I said, you, you haven't done one of those, and.
Two more, I think, I think you're. I like, I like to offer this as a comment, you've made a white paper.
Yeah, I have.
Wouldn't you distribute it to the council as well?
I think we've seen it.
We've, I've shared with council, a few months ago.
I, I haven't seen it, but I can remember.
You're not a council?
Village Council.
I know.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're bringing it to this board to discuss, and we.
And he's off here, yeah.
Yeah, so, we haven't seen it.
Absolutely.
So, and then if you'd like to work with the administration, to work, to see if it's feasible to work with Mario, and possibly get on the agenda if you want to bring something back to this council, the planning commission, and talk it over, I, I leave that up to your office, Joe and, and Mario, to, to bring, to facilitate that.
Right, I, I, what I want is to not, like, to not just draw up, hey, like, we have to do these, these, like, particular items, is to have a nuanced discussion about how we, how we value different, different pieces, because the, like, the research is really, really, like, drastic on how, how much we're losing on some of these, these properties, it's, it's very.
But I guess I'm confused about, are you wanting to propose that the ordinances be, are ordinance changes? Are you proposing the master plan incorporate this in, what do you?
Well, what I'm proposing is just to meet with Mario, and, and have some time to, to, to then decide what we want to do. I think what eventually we would do is we would come up with changes in ordinances, or to, like, to discuss, and possible, maybe the ma, master plan, but like, all I want to do is talk with Mario and see what kind of ideas he has that can make us a stronger, healthier, more financially solvent community, so that we don't get hit with tax raises forever, and it's not like, and, and the, the way that the numbers are pointing, like, we're gonna, like, like, tax raises aren't, aren't going to be enough to come even close to covering, covering this.
Yeah, so I understood that you see a problem and have a solution for reevaluating, and I just wondered what, what were you gonna do with this recommendation? So, the master plan is one thing, if you're recommending something relating to the planning commission, I'm not sure that the planning commission has anything to do with revenues, so I wasn't sure how you were imagining that, or I'm lost a little bit on that.
Well, I mean, the, the, the thing is, the reason why we're struggling with revenue are, are, I think, or not, maybe not struggling, but like, why, like, we're not as efficient as we could be in collecting taxes, is because of thing, of things that, like, are responsible by the planning commission. So like, immediately, things that really jump out to me are like, places that have excessive amount of parking don't generate as much revenue for the village, because you don't, you don't pass parking.
So, it's, you're talking about land use, you're talking about master plan issues, it sounds like, okay. I just wondered what you meant, or how you saw the planning commission fitting in there.
I was trying to wrap this up, guys.
Right, right, I, I was just, I think we need to look at the, the.
We need to, I feel a disadvantage of not seeing the white paper.
Right.
You're asking for things that I, we, this commission can't provide. I think you need to work with Joe through the administration.
Okay.
If Mario's on the, on the agenda, then work through the appropriate channels, and if you think, then, then from that, if it needs to be brought before us to, for an open discussion, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I feel a disadvantage tonight.
Thank you.
Tom?
I'm good.
I have something I just need to announce, I'm, I'm gonna be out.
I have something I just need to announce, I'm, I'm gonna be out and unavailable the first two weeks in June, so if there is a planning commission meeting during that time, I won't be able to attend, so I'm hoping that the landscape ordinance wouldn't come up at that time.
We're gonna approve it while you're done.
I think we should.
Then you have to deal with me.
And I'll be off the last two weeks of June.
What work is, we come about?
I think you guys skipped over on that one.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to tell you something very exciting, the big cable permission, on which I said, hit a hundred million, a hundred, no, hit one million views on YouTube, and twenty thousand on Facebook, and then one million's impressive, I think.
Wow.
So, people are liking what you're doing, and we are getting followers, and it's being used.
Thank you.
And I hope to be here in August, June, I have no more surgeries planned, and I'm just gonna stop going to doctors. That's just all that's possible.
Yes. I have no comment, I think, thank you all for your comments tonight, and your hard lift that we did on the two proposals.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight-thirty, which I think is what you want.
Thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.